The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Can you hear me? Mayor, can you hear me? Mayor, this is George Chatches. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item seven B one, you're to consider approving your lease agreement for the armory. In the agreement on page five, item four regarding rent, section four point one, states the rent will be one dollar monthly from August first twenty, two thousand twenty to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Why are you giving up twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars for nine months? How are you gonna pay the utilities and the upkeep? Is the city that flush? Didn't you just cut employees' hours and wages? You need to rework that lease, Mr. Mayor. What comparables did you use? I asked months ago what you paid for Mr. O'Flaherty's building. I believe it was a lot more for a lot less. Your staff does not what they're doing. The city is not going to break even, Mr. Mayor. Those that can't do their job have got to go. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item seven B four, you're to consider approving the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Ely and Nevada Northern Railway. This needs to be denied. I remind you, Mr. Mayor, rumors continue that tens of thousands of dollars have been embezzled. The taxpayer, the citizens of the community want to know what is going on. The railroad needs to come back under the city's oversight. The railroad receives over two-hundred-and-forty thousand in room tax and grants from the County Attorney Board alone. They need to operate under the Nevada Open Meeting Law. The taxpayer, the citizens have no idea how their money is being spent. You, Mr. Mayor, are employed by the railroad on some occasions, as I understand, and we have two council persons on the management board, which may or may not be, may not be paid. We don't know. You and the council have a fiduciary responsibility for protection of public assets and public monies. You must publicly address the rumor regarding the embezzlement. If it is a rumor, then quash it. If not, reveal it and the details on how you're going to address it. I again remind you that there's nepotism in the management which is not being addressed now as well as the past. They have yet to respond to my request for public information dated October of two thousand fifteen. Mr. Mayor, what is the total debt to date of the railroad? I've asked that before and we've yet to get an answer. Mr. Mayor, I've noticed several squatters around town. I want to know if you're collecting utility fees and landfill. I can't use my property and I'm not very happy about watching people just come in, sitting down and not paying anything when I'm willing to pay, but your building inspector is the problem. Mr. Mayor, on several occasions I've asked and I've requested a copy or presented a request for public information in regards to former councilwoman Jolene Gardner receiving thousands of dollars from the City of Ely, having encroached her property with some kind of utility and caused her some kind of harm. Councilman Jim Alworth was the clerk at the time and Treasurer Trask may have signed the check that was approved by the then-city council. Again, how much was she paid? Five thousand, ten thousand? I want to know. Mr. Mayor, once again, I'm requesting a complete list of all liens settled, the amount collected, who made the agreement, and the date it was made and approved. The city is not treating everybody the same. The city is selectively enforcing the law under color of law, and that needs to stop.
Do we have any backup plans?
Well, we, we talked about doing fourteen-day rotations so that we have that fourteen-day period, but that's not been implemented yet. Right now, if the exposure that happened last night, test positive, which we have a strong feeling it will, after, you know, during the lab, lab check, it's, the Dr. B M felt that the seven-day gestation period didn't have them tested, which will take twenty-four to seventeen hours for the results to come back. So right now, they're at, they're at self-monitoring if their fever is starting to feel sick or whatever. That's the way we're playing it. He says the true full exposure is somebody that's not wearing any PPE, no masks, something of this sort, then that's what's called full exposure. CDC has some other recommendations which, two of my EMTs could be at high risk, a high exposure type situation, and I don't think they call it exposure. The person driving the ambulance is, they were standing in the vicinity but not acting on the patient. It's called medium exposure. And the workers coming back to the station and, like me myself, that's been by them today, are considered low risk unless one of them are tested positive. So this is all new to us and we're trying to work through this and come up with a plan for sure if some of these issues come true to light.
Yeah, exactly. We're already kind of short, shorthanded anyway, so.
Right.
Definitely need a Plan B, huh?
Yeah. So we're looking at minimum seven to nine days right now for some of these, some of these, at least two of these employees. Well, one's an employee, one's a volunteer.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
It's kind of the nature of the beast, the call, the person was in total distress, so he needed assistance right now. You know, it's something that, just the nature of what we do.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Police Chief Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Filed my report with you for last quarter statistics. I apologize for the confusion there. When we ran the report, we forgot to redact the county statistics out of the city statistics, so you got the full view the first time. So the second report that I just sent about an hour ago are the actual statistics for the city. Do you guys have any questions on those?
I don't, just a question about how rollout and enforcement of Phase One has been going.
Um, you know, not too bad. There has been a few questions that have arose that had to reach out to Gaming Control and speak to them to get some clarifications on some issues, but they were very helpful. So we're just moving forward. Hopefully, we just keep progressing on our openings and we get lots of people back to work.
All right. Have you had many calls about employees not wearing face masks or anything like that?
No, no, not at all. I think everybody is, the businesses that were allowed to go back to work are very appreciative of that and they are following the guidelines set forth by the governor.
Okay. Any questions for Sheriff Henry? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Municipal Court Judge? Judge Costa, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I turned on the mic. We don't have a written report now that comes later in the month. I did want to let you know that we are continuing almost exclusively telephone appearances. The, we're running at about fifty percent of the pre-situation volume. And the only exceptions to telephone are those folks who are in custody. And on a related note, we rearranged the courtroom, particularly since we don't have to have the same seating arrangement, to provide distance between the employees in the course of the daily work. The two ladies in the office are still working relatively proximate, probably six feet apart, but the courtroom allowed us ample room to space out from the city attorney, my work, my, you know, where I'm sitting now, and the clerk's position, which really is not movable because of the.
Any questions for Judge Costa? Thank you, Judge Costa.
Thank you.
Uh, city attorney?
Nothing to add on the liens. I do want to let everybody know that after tomorrow, we will be having a physical location for the meetings. It will still be limited to ten or fewer, but the restriction, the suspension of the physical location requirement is, will be no more as of tomorrow, so there will be a physical space for our meetings going forward. But again, it'll be limited to ten or fewer people at the physical location.
Any questions for Attorney Calhoun? Thank you. City clerk?
Do you have my report? Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
City treasurer?
I don't have anything.
Any questions for the treasurer? Thank you, Jeanette. City Public Works Supervisor, Mike?
Yeah, I got nothing to add, just everything's running smoothly and is there any questions for me?
Any questions for Mike?
Hey, Mike, this is Kurt. I noticed you did a little patching on Avenue C. How did that go?
Uh, that cold patch across there?
Yeah, that skin coat or whatever you call it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. That went very, it went very nicely. And then actually talking to Steve Bear and Eric Trahal, they were, they, they said that's exactly how we should do it. And then later on the next season, put a chip seal over the top of it and that should last very well, they said.
It looks like it turned out nice.
It really did. We was, we was happy with it. And we're gonna do more roads like that this year.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Uh, city water operator, you have to report. Uh, city engineer? Go ahead.
Okay, now, okay. You guys got a report. You got any questions for me?
BJ, would you give us a bit of a report on the end dot project?
Unfortunately, last, I think it was actually on Wednesday, we got a call that the project has been put indefinitely on hold due to budgetary reasons with COVID, so they can kind of figure out what monies are gonna be available, how this is gonna impact their revenue and trying to be, you know, I guess, walk safely through this thing and not get the state in a bind for lack of funding to complete projects. And so that was very unfortunate news.
It will be reconsidered on the June meeting, as I understand it. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's my understanding as well.
Do we have any questions for Engineer Alberg?
Yeah, BJ, this is Kurt. I have a question. So as far as the city is concerned, how far along are we on your engineering audit? Is it pretty well wrapped up or do we still have to finish up some stuff?
It's, it's pretty well wrapped up, Kurt. The only thing is there, we did get a letter from the State Review on the water things, and so they got, you know, some comments. They want to make some minor adjustments to it and some clarifications on the plans. That was it. And so that would be something that we might consider to proceed with just so that as, when this project does come back online and gets completed, you know, it's basically fit in their shelf, ready, ready to go. And that's for the first phase. That's, that's for the first phase, Kurt.
Oh, okay, got it.
And we are looking to be able to be reimbursed from the state for those costs at this point, even if the project doesn't continue forward. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. Mike Caruba is gathering information and getting that agreement stuff together, so they are proceeding, trying to get that taken care of.
Thanks, BJ. Any other questions for the engineer? Okay, we will move on to the city building official.
I have nothing to add to my report unless there's any questions.
Hey, I know some of those squatters that George had mentioned, we had sent reports to or notice and orders to. Is that correct?
They've actually left.
Sure.
They're gone.
Perfect. Any questions for Brad from the council? Okay, thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
With that, we will move on to item five, reports, city council. Jim, we'll start with you.
I have some to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Kurt?
No report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kurt. Michelle?
Nothing to report from me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. For my report, I, I want to mention that we have been working, BJ and I, with the Lieutenant Governor as well as our congressional representation in Pico Cachia at the state level, trying to get some information on how we can encourage the state to proceed with this end dot project. I feel like that's an important thing. It was kind of pulled suddenly there right as the contractor was ready to go. Not only does this have repercussions for our area, but there's about a hundred jobs in Washoe County that this kind of may evaporate, which is certainly no good. So the union's involved with that as well. We're working on that and hoping to be able to keep pushing when it comes to the Transportation Board meeting in June. I do want to announce too that Kinross has volunteered to donate twenty thousand dollars to our revolving loan fund to continue helping with those loans. I believe we have about four, three or four loans currently in the work. Caroline McIntosh has been pushing those. I notified our local lenders about those and banks, so they've been able to push those out to people. And we're gonna have a few applicants coming this next week, and I, I think that's been a good, good project and we appreciate the partnership from, from Kinross on that. In addition to that, this issue with our restaurants located within casinos, I've been working with J.J. Gocci on that and the state. Honestly, I've been very disappointed with the way the state has handled that. We had a long conversation with the Gaming Control Board yesterday on, on why this was the case. It, it just makes no sense whatsoever and we're doing our best to kind of support our, our local businesses in that. Unfortunately, even though these restaurants are regulated through the city and the local health department, if the state's gonna threaten their landlord's gaming licenses, it kind of takes it out of our hands as far as jurisdiction. And so we're definitely working with that and trying to, trying to find some answers and in cursive, the state should roll this back. It just does not make any sense. So I think that's all I have for my report at the moment. With that, we'll move on to item six, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Municipal Utilities Board. Item one, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, recommendation of approval to waive commercial fees to deposit metal at the city landfill, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty to June fourteenth, two thousand twenty, to encourage commercial property owners to clean up their property. Kurt, could you give us a little background and let us know how that went this morning?
Sure, I did have a bad connection this morning, so correct me if I'm wrong, but this did go in front of the Utility Board this morning and they recommended approval of it. I just think it's a good idea to encourage commercial property owners to get rid of their metal and take it to the landfill for no charge. So I would recommend approval. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any other discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Jim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to item two, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, recommendation of approval of Resolution twenty twenty dash eight, adding a twenty-five-dollar surge charge for any septic waste disposal above two-hundred-and-fifty gallons. Kurt?
Yes, thank you. This went in front of the Utility Board this morning as well. They recommended approval. This was actually recommended by our operator, Raul, out of Wendover. The septic waste is very hard on the pumps and motors and such. So what they do in Wendover is they take this twenty-five dollars, put it in a separate account for parts and motors and stuff like that. So I would move to approve.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions or comments from the council on this item? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Jim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Item passes. Item three, Councilman Flanagan's request of this be stable for the moment until the next meeting. With that, I will entertain a motion to table.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second to table. I will go for the vote. Jim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion's table. Item four, Board Member, City Engineer, BJ Alberg, discussion for possible action, matification of City Council, May sixth, two thousand twenty, approval of White Pine County's Willsticker Application to tap the city's water line at seventeen eighty-five Gray Basin Boulevard for a four-inch water service and a, and four-hundred-and-seventeen drain fixture units, DFUs. This was kind of done in arrears. I assume that passed this morning?
I'll ask BJ or Jennifer Lee to take this one over. I couldn't hear this one.
Yes, the City Council, or excuse me, the Utility Board did pass this.
Okay. Question, the discussion on this from the council?
As in the meeting on the sixth of May, I will go ahead and disclose that I have a commitment in a private capacity to my husband, who is an employee of the county. But like in that meeting on the advice of the city attorney, I will go ahead and just disclose that and vote as this should have no effect on his job at all.
Okay. Do I have a motion for this item?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Jim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. This is the consent agenda. We have minutes from April twenty-third and April thirtieth and bills from April twenty-first and twenty-ninth. Do I have any questions or corrections that need to be made on either of those?
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction on both minutes.
Okay.
On April twenty-third, meeting on page four, down in item number eight, the second paragraph, just to take right after twenty twenty dash twenty-one, two, it should be expand, not expand.
Okay.
Find that, Jennifer?
Where is it again, Jim, on page four?
In section eight, in the second paragraph, Councilman Alworth stated.
Correct. Yeah, you're right. Okay, got it.
Okay, and then on the minute for April thirtieth, page six, big paragraph in number seven, sort of got twisted around there. It says, with the recommendation from Kevin Williams, the Department of Taxation, Mr. Badon recommended, instead of negotiating back and forth, it should be just to give the city two-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
They didn't, okay, and then the next sentence after, we have to pay the county for the current police services contract we are in, which is twenty-seven percent or fifty-four, I think, dropped, after the twenty-seven percent, but apparently it dropped to fifty-four because it comes up in the next sentence.
Okay.
That's it. The last ones, you're doing a good job on these.
So Jim, is that a motion with those corrections to approve the minute and the bills?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kurt? Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Jim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, bills, approve the minutes. We'll move on to item B, new business. Item one, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval of lease agreement between City of Ely and State of Nevada Department of Administration Public Works, Division for Form, oh, Public Works Division for Former Armory Building Located at one-twenty-five Mill Street.
Mayor Robertson, just for the record, I want to note on page nine of this proposed lease, it states under six-point-three C that the tenant, being the state, shall reimburse a lessor, that's the city, for utilities during the early access period beginning August first, two thousand twenty through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Any other questions on this agreement prior to proceeding? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
I move to approve.
Michelle, do I have a second?
Jim, second.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Jim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Okay. Item passes. We'll move on to item two, Councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action, approval to notice intent to terminate interlocal agreement for fire EMS services between the City of Ely and White Pine County in order to meet the twelve-month with notice requirement in Article thirteen, Section thirteen-point-one D of said agreement, with the intent to renegotiate terms starting July first, two thousand twenty, as also provided in Article thirteen, Section thirteen-point-one D.
I make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thanks, Kurt. Any discussion from the council on that?
Yes, I would like to disclose that I have a commitment in a private capacity to my husband, who is an employee of the, of White Pine County. This contract does not affect his. his position any more than any other county employee. And on the advice of the city attorney, I will go ahead and disclose that and vote. Further, I would like to state that I am disappointed and frustrated at the behind-the-scenes pressure to the city attorney to find that I must have stayed from this vote only after I had expressed my opposition to this item. I have a duty to vote on as much as I am able to, and that is what I plan to do.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion from the council on that?
I guess I would like to throw my two cents into. Um, we definitely need to, to notice the county, you know. We're, we're kind of need to negotiate some stuff with them. And I, I encourage whoever wants to be on that negotiation team to reach out to the county and um, and let's see if we can strike a deal with them that, that benefits both parties. That's all I have to do.
I think, I think opening up negotiations would be great. I do not think doing it in the form of terminating the agreement is a good idea. I think that is in bad faith. And I think if we intend to continue to provide these services, we need to go to them. There is a reopener clause. We can go to them and say, listen, we want to, we want to continue to provide these services. Chief Rivera and Chief North both said in the commission meeting yesterday, things are going so well. Everyone is happy. Everyone is working together. This community needs this agreement to work. I think putting in our notice to cancel this agreement is wrong. I do not think we should, I do not think this should be the way we should be going about it.
Okay, I'll give my two bits on that. For the contract, it's allowed to do this. We're doing that. And again, we're to get, we'll be able to negotiate, but we still have to have this in place because we have no idea financially what's gonna happen in the next year. If we find out everything goes really south on this, we have to wait till this time in two thousand twenty-one to give the notice again. This is more of a sense of security for the city. I believe fiscally responsible people would understand this. Thank you.
I might add my two cents. Um, just by way of information, uh, the, the commission did vote to uh look at adjusting the police agreement with us. I think they're negotiating in good faith. I, I can understand, uh, Councilman, uh, Alworth feeling that we need this kind of backstop to these negotiations just as a protection to the city. Um, I'm, I'm hoping the county sees it as just that as well. Um, and that, um, these negotiations in light of, you know, the situation that we're all in, uh, the state, the county, the city, um, you know, that we can, that we can all negotiate in good faith to do what's best for the community. And, and despite the differences of opinion here, I, I don't think I'd be going too far to say that everybody has the same goal in that. Um, you know, even though maybe the, the methods might, the opinions on the method might be a little different. I would hope that we can see that we do all have the same goal there and that, uh, we can proceed with this, so. With that, any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. We do have a motion and a second. Councilman Alworth?
Aye.
Councilman Carson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beecher?
Nay.
Okay.
Just for the rec, for the record, Mayor Robertson, motion does not pass. It requires a quorum.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, we will move on then to item three, Councilman Flengus, discussion for possible action, reconsideration to remove the past due landfill fee penalties up to the amount of one thousand nine dollars and sixty-six cents from Sixth First Street, Route Nevada, at the request of property owner Wanda Gillespie. Uh, Councilman Flengus asked that this be tabled until the next meeting. I would, that, I would entertain a motion to table.
I'll move to table.
Thank you, Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, any discussion on this item? With that, I will call for a vote to table. Jim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Okay. And for item four, I will turn the gavel over to Councilwoman Beecher.
Okay, item number four, Councilwoman Beecher, discussion for possible action, approval of second amendment to develop a gr, development agreement between the City of Ely and Nevada Northern Railway Foundation, Inc., extending the term of the agreement to April first, two thousand twenty-one. I will entertain a motion or a discussion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
General, second.
And do we have any further discussion? Okay, then I'll call for the vote. Jim?
Aye.
And Kurt?
Aye.
And Jennifer, I'm so sorry. Do I need to vote on this then?
You would in order for it to pass.
Okay, then I'll also vote aye. Motion passes and we'll give the gavel back to the mayor.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, with that, we will move back into our final public comment. Uh, please unmute yourself, identify yourself in three minutes. Public comment?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
I can. Go ahead, George.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, earlier, I stated, uh, squatters are all gone.
If that's the case, what did they pay for utilities? Uh, Mayor, you're claiming you're trying to help local businesses. Let me tell you, in my case, you're killing me. I want my building permit. I've been waiting for months. And I need to get this taken care of. Um, let's see here.
Mr. Mayor, on the lease, let me, let me cut the speaker off a second. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to find different locations. I've come up to City Hall and asked for a copy, uh, excuse me, a date stamp and copy of the bids that were submitted for the Georgetown Ranch lease. That request is made under Nevada Open Meeting Law, and we're months out. I don't know what the problem is, but I want that information. Mr. Mayor, uh, approximately two months ago, I reported a fire, uh, yard hydrant stalled near the Bath Lumber Yard entrance, your fire, fire hydrant outside the fence line. I have seen other requests on your agenda for will serve and nothing for that location. When did they apply? When was it approved? And what did they pay for that? Mr. Mayor, the uh billing on my property, four ninety High Street, has yet to be uh rectified. You guys are misbilling me. I want to remind you, I paid all of the fees. When I bought the property from the county, there were no leads. The lame city attorney at that time filed a lien against the original owner a month later and after the fact. Ownership has been broken. Your attorney failed to collect in a timely manner. Your city manager and city treasurer are failing you. Those that can't do their job have got to go, Mr. Mayor. City ordinance mandates a city treasurer must have a bachelor's degree in accounting. When I was elected mayor years ago and I came on board, there was twenty-two thousand deficit, according to Mr. Alworth, who was the clerk at that time. He has been there for years. So has uh Jeanette Trask. They're the problem. You need to correct this situation. This baloney of hundreds of thousands of dollars, someone didn't do their job, Mr. Mayor, and you need to look at that and look hard. Mr. Mayor, I put in a request in regards to um how much overtime has been paid in the fire department? Again, I want to remind you, rumors state that the amount is between sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. I want to know who received the overtime? What was the amount paid to each individual? This is months old, Mr. Mayor. You need to address that. Mr. Mayor, the new parking lot for the convention center does not meet, meet minimum ADA requirements. The center walkway has not been put back to keep pedestrians off the street, and the stop sign on the corner of Fifth and High Street has been down for months. What's the problem, Mr. Mayor? Let's see here. Mr. Mayor, I've asked in the past and I'm asking again, did the community choir ever built, get a building permit for the black, plastic uh sheet they put on their building? Did a contractor do the work on that commercial building? I would like a copy of the permit if they did.
Hearing none?
Hi, this is Elizabeth Francis. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Robertson and, and city council um members for your support of the White Pine County Justice Center project. We do appreciate your um allowing us to move forward with this project, uh, with the water and sewer. And um we look forward to working with you as partners as we work through this unprecedented time. So thank you very much again for your support, and we appreciate you as partners.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, any other public comment? Last call for public comment. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll see you guys at the hall next week, or next.
Thank you.
Next meeting.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chat just reporting.